This is the March 20th, 2018 Committee of the Whole Meeting. We're now calling to order. Mr. Crumstock, we're starting out with the Community Portal.
Sure thing. I'm going to do a very, very brief introduction and actually Don Wenzel and Justin, if he comes out of IET and videotaping, he's actually going to be around too. But also Mitch from our GIS Consortium is going to go through the Community Portal and the map office a little bit. But it's been some time since you've actually seen this and obviously residents at home have seen this. But staff, we've been really using a lot more. We've been adding more. Obviously Alderman Diasis and Alderman Majikas knows that we did a very small demonstration of one of the sites on this for vacant property or property for sale. And Mitch is going to go over that too. But keeping it very brief, here's Mitch and obviously Don and Justin are around too.
Go ahead.
Oh, great. Well, thank you guys all for having me. My name's Mitch Greenan. As Barry mentioned, I am the JS Specialist for this city. I'm an employee of MGP. Rolling Meadows is a member of the GIS Consortium. We're just made up of 34 different communities throughout this area. So tonight, I want to give a brief introduction to what GIS is, my role for the city, and then give several demonstrations on projects that I'm involved in as well as demoing Community Portal, as Barry mentioned. So just kind of starting off, overall, what is GIS? So GIS stands for Geographic Information Systems. So overall, the city of Rolling Meadows has a lot of data. So it's essentially my job to pull it all into one centralized location and then visualize it to help staff make important decisions quicker. So tonight, I'd like to briefly demonstrate that, like I mentioned, and then also make sure that it's communicated to all of you, the GIS resources that are available and that you have access to as city officials, and then also what residents have access to in order to learn more about where they live. So as I mentioned, the city has a lot of data that they manage. And thankfully, there is one common denominator to every property in the city, and that's the address. So the first product that I'd like to demonstrate tonight is Community Portal, which is an address-based public and private application that allows for staff to visualize data quicker, and then it allows residents to learn more about where they live. So for where this is located, I just want to kind of start off as if I were a resident in Rolling Meadows. If I'm on the homepage, below Quick Links, I can scroll down and I can see a box here that says Community Portal. So what I can do is I can type in any address in the city. So let's say that I live at 2612 Rolling Road. I can enter that and hit Go. And as you can see, information will come up here that's specific to that address that I typed in. So in here, you have access from information that's coming from a lot of different sources. So the first one is PIN number. This also is attached to the Cook County tax information. So it's essentially a quicker way to get all of this information. So in addition to that Cook County information, there's local information. So let's say I want to know when my garbage comes. So you can see on here, it comes on Wednesday. Same with recycling. And then there's contact information in case that does not come. So in addition to this information, there's tabs on the top specific to the information that is in here. So moving through, there's information on the government representatives specific to where it, what the addresses that you type in. So as you can see here, this is great timing. If you want to know where you can vote, it'll say what precinct you're in and then actually your polling location for where you would vote. And then kind of moving towards state and county and national information, local officials, so you can know what ward you're in, who your alderman is, and then get more information on how to contact people in your ward, your alderman. And then moving on, your county officials, state officials, and then US officials. So the good thing about this is this is all a direct connection to this information. So it's not something that we have to continually maintain, and it is specific to the address that you type in. So just kind of moving through this, let's say you want to get more information on zoning in your area. So if you want, if you're putting in a fence and you want to know setback information. So all of this information will be in here, and all of this will be specific to the zone that you are in. And then if you have any questions, it has contact at the bottom for who you can contact at the city. And then moving forward, this is all tabular based. However, there is a mapping component to this. So for example, like I mentioned earlier, let's say you want to know, well, you know when your garbage comes, but you talked to your neighbor across the street, and they said, well, mine comes on Monday. Well, you can actually use this to see, oh, well, that's because this side of the street, your garbage does come on Monday, but on your side of the street, it comes on Wednesday. So it's just a quick way to get that information. So in addition to this, there's also something called the Property Tax Breakdown. So what this is, is this is connecting to the tax bill information, specific to the address that you put in. And it'll essentially give you a snapshot of where your tax dollars go, depending on where you live. So as you can see here, you can see how this breaks down. So this goes to the school district, this goes to the township, and then this goes to the city. And then if you keep scrolling down, there's a tax bar chart that'll have another way to visualize this data, just by how it goes through for different municipalities. So overall, this is the information specific to if you're a resident. This is all public information. But something that you have the ability to do is if you, this is all through your credentials as city employees. So what you can do is you can hit the login button up here in the right-hand corner. And when you do that, you will see new tabs appear. And you can see there are now a fire incident, police incident, rental information, and utility billing. So essentially, what this is doing is this is tying into different systems that we have in our city. So these fire, if you click Fire Incidents, that will connect to our firehouse database, same with police incidents, rental information, and billing information. So if you are a police officer and you're out patrolling, you can get information specific to this address just by putting this information in. And eventually, what I do is we want this to be a resource for all the different departments so they have all this data, but they can then just have all this information to either provide to their residents or to look up information quicker. Because before Community Portal, it was, there was a lot of communication that had to happen to get answers that this can get a lot quicker. So I think that's kind of how, where GIS is valuable, like conceptually overall, and then with this product as well. So that's essentially a quick overview of Community Portal, where it is, how you can access it. And so we can get to questions later. I just want to give a couple other examples of some other projects that I've been working on for the city. So going back, I will go to this website. So on the city of Rolling Meadows website, below or above Community Portal, there's a tab called Interactive Maps. So these are also maps that are available to residents. And what you can do is you can click on any of these that you're interested in. So Barry mentioned earlier, there is an available properties map that I've created, and this can be used to see available properties throughout the city. So you can see there's a map on the right, and then on the left are all of the available properties for office, for retail, and then for industrial. And then just like an example is you can click on one of these, you can click on it to get more information, you can get like a brief overview of the information, and then if you actually want to go to the pamphlet itself, you can do that. So it's just a kind of a one-stop shop for getting this information a little bit quicker versus having to go through clicking through the website or clicking through somewhere externally. And it's something that we've developed an internal process to make sure this is updated and that it's available. So in addition to this, I've also created a ward boundary map. So as I mentioned, in Community Portal, you can search your address to see who your alderman is, to know what ward you're in. But this is just like a quick way to have this information, or even if you want to create your own map, you can just print this out in a pamphlet and have access to this. So in addition to this, in addition to this, we also have our interactive bike path map. So I guess this is just an example of how we can take all of the data that we have in the city and then just visualize it for things that are most important to residents in the city. And I think the best part about GIS is it's continually, continually growing and that we're continually building for what's most important to us, what's most important to residents. And the last thing that I wanted to demo was, this is another public-facing application that is for residents that will be rolled out soon, is our Community Events Map. So essentially, what this has is this has all of the events that are happening this year. And what you can do is you can just go, okay, I want to know what's going on in May. All right, this is the city market that's going on. And then it's just a brief way to get all this information. And then we can tie this and we can update this to the city website itself and anything that we send out for residents to know what's going on in the city, just a little bit easier for them to access. So that is all that I have for demonstrations. I would like to use the rest of the time for any questions that you might have, or if there's anything that I missed, Barry or Don that you'd like to cover, but thank you.
I would just like to add that on a monthly basis, we find this product to be, the GIS to be something citywide, to be used by all of our employees, not just Public Works, not just Community Development. And on a monthly basis, we hold a monthly GIS planning meeting in which we have representatives from all the departments. They bring their ideas, what their needs are. We started three years ago when MGP came on board. We put together a five-year plan. And with that five-year plan, you know, we had a number of projects. The biggest project that we have going on right now is the integration with the ERP. And so getting all the addresses with, and you wouldn't, you couldn't even imagine how many different databases there are in the city. But to have every database, have the address in the same format, and you know, was, is a big task, and Mitch has been working on that. And as we move forward, he'll continue to work on that to make sure that everything matches. We also then, as we have these projects, and we have stakeholder meetings, and the stakeholders would be, you know, if it was a police department project, it would be Mitch, myself, or Rob Horn, and then members of the police department would go through, you know, what their needs are and how we can accomplish those needs. So with that being said, we are open to any questions, and if there's any, you know, further, you know, if you would like assistance navigating through it, we are available to be able to help you with it. We believe that this is a great tool. It certainly has cut down on the amount of phone calls that we've gotten in Public Works since we rolled it out for people calling about their garbage collection day, what ward am I in, et cetera. So I'm sure not only at Public Works, but at the front desk here. But this is a great tool for you that if you get a call from your constituents, you can either direct them to it or you can quickly answer their questions.
The one other thing that I just want to stress, and this goes back into a lot of the stuff that staff has that obviously residents can't see at this point in time. But we've taken a lot of paper, specifically if you look at our water sewer and a bunch of different things. It's all accessible now. So for the last few years, a lot of those water main breaks are now part of it. So now staff can look at, see where those breaks were, and evaluate it. The other thing with Rob Horn in the back room, just making sure that he's paying attention. We actually utilize it for some of our construction projects, but also for our capital improvement program. And that's actually something that we do a lot of utilizing the GIS, but also graphing how we're doing some of our projects. So a lot more integration, intergration continues going on with all the different pieces. But at the same point in time, we continue making more layers of information that we're utilizing. And if you ever see Public Works with one of their computers, sometimes they're taking some of that information and putting it immediately so then it populates into the information that we're actually utilizing. And again, we do a lot of work now with the IRP, making sure that handshake is going on. So when IRP goes live, a lot of this is also tied with every other piece that we have.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments before we ask for, I just, it's really great. I can remember being with a Citizens Public Works Academy, and I usually try and spend a day, like during the summer, with different departments, when this was just, it was really exciting to go see a water main, and that was the only thing you saw on the computer. And I remember Don saying, it's going to get better. It's going to get better because I could see my house, and there's the water main, and there's the sewer. So I just kudos from where you've come so far, so I think it's great. Are there any, excuse me, questions for clarifications, Ms. Majikas?
Thank you. I think this is wonderful, besides just for the current residents and information, but for future or new residents that come in and have so many questions. Just curious, do we track at all, like how often people are looking at it? Have any idea of how many residents look at, do we track it in any way like that?
Yeah, we can't have the number. We can't have specifically who is.
Right, right. But we know that people are using it and they're...
Exactly. And we have different pages, like I mentioned, so we can see who, how many pages are getting how many hits, so we can get a good idea of, because that's the most important part, right? We can build whatever we want. But if we can't get it out to the residents, I mean, that's, that's what's most important for the development of it, but yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions for clarification? Okay, is there anyone, any discussion on this item then?
Well, thank you for allowing us to update you. You may see us again in a couple months when the Capital Projects Map, we're working on that now, but when we get the Capital Improvement Project Map put together and after the Capital Improvements Committee sees it, we'd like to bring it back to you and show you how you can access data on there also because with, you know, the street programs and sidewalk programs and water main projects and so on, it would be nice to know what's taking place in your ward and who it's going to be affecting. So thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Crumstock, I guess you're going to lead off the restaurant incentive?
I'm going to do a very brief introduction, and then I'm going to, well, it's all in the packet, but if Alderman Diasis wants to make any additional comments. But again, this was brought up by Alderman Diasis originally to the City Council. It was given to the Economic Development Committee, and then for five different meetings, November, December, January, February, and March, we worked on this, and it is a restaurant incentive program for the entire city. When you look through some of the information, there's really two parts. There's one part that looks like the PowerPoint, that's the discussion about how the program works. And then the last three pages are really assigned off if someone wants to participate, and that's the draft item that you see. And most of the information that would be provided to the city is really stuff that banks are asking for and some additional as we evaluate part of it. It's really at this point in time before the City Council for discussion, feedback. So if there's any additional information that needs to be done, then we're asking for a straw vote if you would like to proceed because now there would have to be some legal wordsmithing by City Attorney Jim McCall. And then the final part is, if we are putting this into an ordinance, one thing that the Economic Development Committee really didn't talk about, and that's really council direction, if you want to proceed this way, is a time limit. Do you want to have a time limit? Do you not want to have a time limit? I go back into a little history with the D Plan that we did have a time limit. And again, this is just a restaurant incentive program for different opportunities. I would stress, when we did talk about this at Economic Development Committee, you know, we would budget for it because obviously a business has to be in place for a period of time. So there are parameters that we would actually have in place. So with that, that's my very brief introduction and then what we're looking for direction tonight.
Okay. Thank you. And as you have pointed out, we started this, or Mr. Diasis started this six, seven, eight months ago, November, and it has been through Economic Development five times. So if we can come to a consensus and move forward, however, if people have questions and you want to come back for discussion, we can, we can do that. So are there any questions for clarification to start off with?
I would start with Mr. Diasis.
Thank you. It's been, the plan, the incentive has grown and been fine-tuned by the Economic Development Committee for quite some time. I tried to not be overbearing. I wanted the members of that committee to look at it and make this a worthwhile plan. It's different than what I first proposed, but I think overall, it's a, it's a good incentive for both people who are renting space and for those who are purchasing space. It's, it's open for further discussion. We can add or subtract anything we want to. And what I would, the only thing I would move that we go, we include on this is that I'd like to see this be in place for a period of five years. And I say five because we, we did have a consultant that we used for three years, and we didn't really get anywhere. So I think five years is a good timeframe. But I would put the caveat in there that we review this plan annually and update it based on what staff hears, primarily, I think, probably Martha. You know, she might say, hear from restaurants saying, well, it would be nice if the incentive included this, or it didn't include that. So I think at least every 12 months, we should bring this up at a council meeting and have Martha, and I'm just using your name, Martha, or whomever is getting the input on this, bring that input to council so that we can modify and continually improve this incentive. Because if you just write it once and throw it on the shelf, it's going to collect moss and die. So I think we need to improve, continually improve this. That's all I have, Mr. R.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Diasis. Are there any questions, points of clarification for this? Mr. Randor.
Thank you. My understanding initially, before I started reading this, was we, we kind of wanted to target this mostly on the Kirchhoff corridor to attract restaurants to there, which we've been complaining there aren't any. And so I was kind of surprised when this was all city. I guess that, one of my comments. And we've talked about this before, and I think it was Alderman Cannon who had said for, for a startup restaurant, it's cash-heavy at the beginning. So rebating them dough at the end of the year, the timings, the timings off. They need that when they start. So I guess if I was, if I was thinking of how this is going to be most helpful, I would, I would find a way to, to front-load that with some clawback provision, I suppose. If, if they didn't make it the year, or if they decided to pull up stakes. And then one of the other things, whenever you start, I hate to say picking winners, but whenever you start giving discounts to people entering this, the people who've either just entered, so this, this will take several months to fine-tune and roll out, and in that time, let's say you're a new restaurant and you, and you missed the opportunity because you're no longer a new restaurant, what, you always find this. I mean, I think Wisconsin's finding this after they gave Foxconn billions of dollars. Other people are coming to the table now with their hands out saying, hey, wait, that's, that's no fair to give this new guy money, and I'm, I'm struggling, or I, I missed it by half a year. My question would be, do we have something, do we have a script to say, too bad, so sad? Or do we have something, some response to those folks who are going to feel unfairly acted upon? And all of these questions come up before I even say, I'm not a big fan of these types of things because they do tend to pick winners. But those were the questions I, I immediately thought of when I saw that this wasn't targeted to a certain zone. The last time we had this discussion with the D Plan, one of my questions was, what if a national chain comes and we're given a national chain that has zillions of dollars in their back pocket, we're giving them a rebate of permit fees? I have a problem with that because they don't need that money, we do. So before we even do a straw poll on this, I just wanted to throw those, my reservations out there. And I, for the most part, and I think this is consistent with my feelings, the last time this came in front of us, I don't, I don't support this type of plan. I do appreciate us going to bat for trying to get, trying to get more restaurants, if that's what, if that's what people are asking for. It's just something I probably won't support. Thank you. It's just something I probably won't support. Thank you.
So your one question was, that I picked up is if it's something that's retroactive? In other words, that was one of your concerns? Somebody comes in and says, "I started six months ago."
Right.
Okay.
So if I can answer just a few of those, you are correct, it started as a Kirchhoff Road project. So the EDC Committee very quickly decided they wanted to make it all-inclusive for the entire city, not just targeting one area. Because they also looked at some areas that have some vacancies and that might be filled at that point in time. But they felt that it was more make it into an entire incentive for the city, not just targeting Kirchhoff Road. So that's why that Kirchhoff Road section actually changed pretty quickly in the discussion. The other part is, obviously, after a, after an ordinance is actually created, that would start the clock, so it would not be looking back. And again, with, for instance, you are correct, Jersey Mike's is working on Algonquin Road, Gulf Road area. That would not be part of this participation. So once that is actually crafted by the City Attorney, that's typically when the clock starts unless the City Council actually makes that decision. So that five-year clock that Alderman Diasus has started, once that ordinance would actually be for those new restaurants as they come in to those other pieces. Another question that you had was in regards to national chains. We felt that if more of this is more towards those franchisees, I'm saying "we," the Economic Development Committee, actually felt this was more towards the franchisees. And again, they looked at some of the numbers when we provided them what a permit actually costs and some of the backfill because we felt, again, that once that one year is in place, that's where in finance and administration, we could see what they were bringing in food and beverage and that's how those rebates and refunds would actually be done. So trying to keep the city whole, but also making sure that food and beverage tax increases. So I think that there was...
And the front-loading of cash, that would be the permit fees that are reduced by $5,000. That takes place early in the process.
Right. At the end of the one-year period,
That's when...
That wad of money was one of the things I would be, I mean, again, if I was a fan of this, I'd say, "Take that money, front-load it, and then have a clawback provision at the end of the year that says, "When you're, if you do exit, you're going to get that money back."
Yeah.
But they need it then.
Right, and part of the idea was, even when Economic Development Committee was actually discussing this, they did talk about a few of those restaurants have come and gone. Won't use their name, but you can remember the Italian restaurant that was in the downtown. That was about a year that they were around. But personally, I know, and that's part of the City Attorney realm, clawbacks are sometimes very difficult if they go bankrupt. And then how do you get that money back? And that is something that should be concerned.
Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the other question, a couple of questions I have. We look like we're a good chance we're going to approve video gaming. So would any of those establishments qualify for this?
They would actually be, if it's a sit-down restaurant, which is one of those things that they need, they would actually be entitled to this restaurant incentive as it's drawn up right now. But if the council makes a caveat or when the wordsmithing is happening, that's your decision. That discussion never was mentioned when we brought that to Economic Development Committee.
Okay. Well, to go along with what Mr. Bander says, I mean, in general, I think this is, we've come a really long way. I compliment all the people who helped form this so far. I guess a couple of points I would make to go along with what Rob said is that in my experience in business, if we're looking for independent operators who probably have not been in the business before, or maybe this is their second location, usually cash flow is their number-one problem, no matter whether it's a restaurant or another business. So anything we could do to improve their cash flow at the beginning, I think is the more crucial part. If they make it a year, they're probably going to make it. And so maybe I would suggest as a possibility, maybe we would ask for a letter of credit to cover whatever incentive that we think we're going to give them. So I mean, if a bank wrote off, you know, if a bank would support them by a letter of credit, that we would get, if they went bankrupt, maybe that would be a cover for us. I don't know if that's legal or possible, but maybe something we could look into. Because again, I can't reiterate enough, it's, you know, I know friends have had businesses and the biggest issue they have is cash flow. Even if they're successful, it's just hard at the beginning to get money rolling because you've got money going out for equipment in this case, you know, to build out of the store, advertising, staff, it's training. It's just, it's all going one way for a long time. So again, I compliment everybody for what they've done so far. I think it's a great, great start. I guess I'd just like to have some more discussion on some of those issues. But thank you very much for doing this.
I did get a shrug from the City Attorney on the letter of credit, so I'm making the assumption that was a yes.
That was a yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Pajakis.
Just curious, not remember if we discussed this in EDC, but are we aware of any other cities or municipalities that have done any similar type of program and type of results or response they got or anything?
I'm not aware of any personally.
Yeah, I don't remember reading or hearing any.
The incentives that most are utilizing are facade and some of the other pieces, but not this kind of, "One year later, we're going to be rebating some of your money." And it's two-pronged because it's the rebate for the permit plus later on at the one-year or the two-year, but not this aggressive to this point in time.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cannon.
Can I ask one other quick question? This is, does anybody, have we run this by any actual restaurant operator? Just to see if that's exciting to them or interesting to them?
No.
Okay. Maybe it's something, I don't know, I think we, some people have some friends in the industry. Maybe it might be something, just to ask them, say, "Hey, would this be interesting enough for you to consider coming to our town or another town, whatever?" You know, just as an idea to see how they feel about it financially. Thank you.
Questions? Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Bud Metz.
When this was originally brought up, it was for the Kirchhoff Road Corridor. And that was to satisfy resident demand for, perceived resident demand for that area to have a restaurant. By extending it to the whole city, I don't know that we've actually accomplished that goal, which was the original purpose behind doing this. So if we can tier this so that that district gets more of an incentive than another district, that's what I would recommend that we do because that's our goal is to bring the incentive where we want to bring it. And so I'm not against bringing new restaurants to the city. I'd love to see new restaurants all over Raleigh Meadows. But downtown is where there's a real perceived need by the residents, where they regularly speak on this issue. So I don't understand why we'd water that down and not provide an incentive for that area.
Thank you, Mr. Bud Metz. Other discussion or comments? Well, several questions have been brought forth, so we have two choices. Is one, there seems to be several questions that have, need to be answered. So I guess the first straw vote is, do we want, or Mr. Kromstock, do you have more info you want to give?
No, I think that even from the discussion tonight, the discussion items that I mentioned before are really still the main straw votes that need to be done. Do you want to proceed, that legal works on it? And then if there's a time limit, and we only heard one time limit. But I think that that's something that can come back. And we can also, if you don't want to move that quickly, you can bring it back to another Cow and we can talk about tiered levels. But that was nothing that was really discussed at Economic Development Committee. And as I mentioned before, they really wanted this uniform and universal for the city. But again, if the council, because now it's in your hands, wants to have more discussion about tiers that Kirchhoff and Plum Grove and have a different value or return than Algonquin Gulf. And those are all discussions that were not held, but those are things that the council still has direction on.
Okay. Mr. Diasus.
Again, like I said, at the Economic Development, I tried to let, to get ideas from everybody and not overexert myself, my opinions. But I would agree with Nick. I think that a lot of what we hear is that people want more restaurants on Kirchhoff Road. I think a real easy way to tier it is just leaving the plan in place and offering a higher percentage to any restaurants that go to Kirchhoff Road. Leave it at 40 and 20 for the whole city and then increase it to those who want to come to Kirchhoff Road. I mean, you could easily just go from 40 and call it 50 and from 20 and call it 25. And now it's tiered with minimal changes to the entire plan. I'm okay with that. And that takes care of the tier part of it. I too know some restaurateurs that I'd be happy to run it by and get some opinions on that, like Mike said. But I agree with Barry, I think we should, I'd like to see this move. It's taken almost six months to get to this point. I'd like to move this forward and not continue to drag this on. We need to have more of a sense of urgency and there's only a few things left. So if we can move this forward and then we can fine-tune it the next time it comes to us, I think that's probably the best way to do it. Again, just my opinion.
Okay. Further discussion? Well, I think we're going to, two questions first is, as it's presented tonight, we'll go for a straw vote of who would like to see it move as presented tonight. So show of hands as the plan that was presented tonight.
Could you tell us what the second question's going to be?
Pardon me? Well, the second question is that if they don't want to move it forward, then we will bring it back. Because Mr. Diasus has made the point that we would like to move forward with this, so if everyone is happy with...
I think that the two questions, Mayor, would be, A, does the council want to proceed with this? And then the second part is, do the council, when it comes back as an ordinance, do you want suggestions, ideas, so it can be refined on the tiers? So I think that's the two questions, how I'm understanding it. So if the first one doesn't move, then the second one sort of move.
Yes, so I mean, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks.
So the first question is, a straw vote to move it forward as presented tonight. One, two, three, four. Okay. So to move forward tonight as presented?
And the second one.
Second one is that when it comes back to us, do we want it, is the committee the whole or do we want...
My feeling is that when it comes back for that first reading, we would have some ideas, thoughts, to try to keep the process moving along.
Okay, so the second one's question is, when we bring it back, all in favor of being able to amend it or to adjust it when we bring it forward? So straw vote for that. Okay. We're good.
Can I ask another question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, you know, we talked about a number of things in this discussion, so I'm wondering if we can have, Barry, how could we have a legal discussion and maybe not in session? So, because if we include everybody in an email, because there's some questions we've asked tonight as a group that we don't really have a firm answer to right now. So do we have to do that in a Cow?
No, you can actually still do it. And we hope, when we write the council action summary, obviously Alderman Diasus has mentioned that he's going to talk to a few restaurants. He'll give me the feedback so I can put that in the council action summary. Obviously, the City Attorney said the letter of credit, we can have that as part. I think, again, keeping the process moving along, that we can have those answers as part of the CAS. And if we don't have that, then if you need another information, either a staff report or something that we can do at a later date just to keep it moving. And then if the council says, "No, we want it back at a Cow," that would give us enough time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But we're trying to keep it moving.
Okay, we move on. Mr. Kromstock, multi-family recycling.
The next two items, we will have Public Works Director Fred Vogt up to do most of the discussions on this. Even though we have a GIS system, we still have to do paper issues too. This is actually a discussion that we've had internally as staff, obviously for the last two years with interns. But it's a discussion that we have to have and the Environmental Committee has been talking about this for years too. And we do thank SWINK Executive Director coming out a few times to actually talk to them. So with that, I do turn it over to Public Works Director Fred Vogt.
Thank you, Barry. I tried to get at this map that I'm handing out tonight into the packet, but it just wasn't successful late last week, so I figured I'll just bring large ones and take a look at it. We have been looking at multi-family recycling, as Barry said, for a couple of years now. The Environmental Committee has assisted to a certain extent. We've had a couple of summer interns doing some research and doing some outreach to the larger multi-family complexes just to see what interests they have, concerns that they have. One of the things on the map that I just handed out, if you look at it for a bit, you'll see that there are six different haulers that provide service to the multi-family complexes in the city. And through the Environmental Committee efforts several years ago, we learned that generally the complex management companies don't talk to each other, even if they're right next door to each other. So that in large part explains why they don't team up like maybe they could to be cost-efficient, not only for refuse, but if they were to recycle, we'd certainly encourage that if we were going to just look at it as a volunteer program rather than a mandated program. But a couple of things that we realized as we were looking at education materials and a lot of what's in your packet are educational materials that staff has prepared over the last year or two in terms of encouraging multi-family recycling, well, even single-family recycling. The Environmental Committee distributes materials at farmers' market events and we've distributed materials at schools. Willow Bend, I'll single out for one because they've got a great environmental studies program there for the kids and every year they work to clear out some of the creek that's nearby. They've got a couple of teachers there that I think were even in the newspaper recently that do a lot in terms of education at Willow Bend. And maybe there's other schools that do, but we seem to have more in touch with them and contact with Willow Bend. Questions that we have, and not necessarily needing answers tonight, but staff is looking for some parameters from the council ultimately with regards to, do we want to simply continue with educational programs and hope that complexes take on multi-family recycling? We've had several interested, but when we start to talk to them, they obviously have concerns about what it's going to cost. There's no longer recycling incentives that can make it advantageous for haulers to pay them to collect recyclables. In fact, it's not even probably a net neutral anymore. It will cost them to provide or to obtain those services. Locations of where they would put corrals or where they would put recycling containers on their property. A couple of complexes didn't want to put them outside. They wanted to see if they could put them inside their complexes. These are areas that have inside parking. We never really got any further with that because I think there were two different schools of thought with that complex. And they stopped talking to us about that, at least for the time being. We'll follow up again. Co-mingling of materials for those complexes that said they had tried some recycling programs in the past was a problem and that they then had to pay for the recycling to be picked up as refuse as opposed to recycling when there was some money in the business. So that kind of discouraged them in doing that. Kingswalk and Carriage Way are the two complexes that we learned that are making some efforts with selected materials to do that. I know at least one of them, as they recycle their own materials, they bring them to the Public Works, Old Public Works Container Drop-Off Center on Central Road. So that's fine, we welcome that. We certainly intend to keep that there, but we feel that they could certainly investigate getting it collected at their site. Do we want to, as a city, look at mandating recycling? Because all the multi, or all the single-family homes have that opportunity once a week at Curbside, the multi-families generally don't have that as far as the residents having the opportunity to recycle, unless they take extreme efforts to take it to the recycling center or other places. Would we want to, if we were interested in mandating it, franchise it so that we either selected one or several vendors in an effort to try to control the programs, control the... costs? And if we wanted to do that, certainly that's something that we should probably consider looking at, either with a recycling program renewal or a contract renewal for our single-family or at some point in the future. I do point out that because all the multifamily complexes have different contract terms, some we've learned are on a one-year basis or a two-year basis or a three-year basis and others are just unlimited. They can just terminate their service at any point in time and find somebody else to do it if they get a better price or if they don't like their service. So those are the items that we bring your attention out there in terms of consideration for if we, as a city, want to pursue this further. As I said, I don't need direction necessarily tonight. If there's interest in getting more information on any of this with regards to providing the service, we can certainly do that. If there's no interest at all in getting into the multifamily recycling, then we would simply stop pursuing it other than educational efforts.
Mr. Crumstock, do you have anything to add?
No, again, it's just really in more for the informational book direction. Again, you want us to do more education, do you want to mandate recycling and some of the other pieces? And again, this does come up every so often. I do appreciate Alderman, Baner, who's sat through a few of these meetings about recycling at the environmental committee, but it's to the point that we needed some direction.
Thank you. Mr. Cannon, any questions?
Yes. Fred, I was wondering if you could tell me, with the two units that are actually doing it right now, even on a small basis, have they seen a reasonable reduction in their garbage? You know, I can just tell you, on my block, I wouldn't say that I have a standard block or anything, but it just seems like our neighborhood now recycles dramatically more product than we put in garbage. You know, like most families have like a half a bag out on Saturdays. If that was the case with these big complexes, I'm guessing, you would correct me if I'm wrong, because you would know a lot more about this than I do, but I would guess that they, there would be a possibility that they would be shipping more, less garbage away and they might be able to get a cost reduction from their garbage guy, I'm guessing, but I don't know that.
It absolutely follows logic that that would be true. We did not ask them for information about, you know, how they measure savings from their hauler, but certainly if they're diverting from the refuse waste stream, there's got to be a savings based on decrease of service. Depends on how they negotiate their contracts.
You know, I know, I don't know all these complexes, but the ones you go by, they have those huge bins out in back. Is it possible that they can make one, I mean, I know down in Florida, I've seen a lot of them where they actually have recycling bins that size for a big complex. Is that the way the big guys do it here also?
Not generally. My understanding is that they would put a dumpster out or some sort of a container out, either a two-yard, four-yard, 20, it really depends on the size of the complex and what the demand is, but certainly we would expect that they would enclose them and, you know, follow city codes with regards to securing the materials in a containment area.
So in light of the fact that we're going to have some more discussion about recycling on our next item, would someone be interested in having a contract for the whole city for recycling, you know, including those, is, are people interested in that business? Or is it just they're doing it, but it's going to cost?
Mr. Crumstock? I'll, I'm going to put it, or?
I was going to say, if I understand the question correctly, are we interested as Public Works or?
No, no, no. So you are correct. One hauler would love to have the city of Rolling Meadows.
Okay.
And you are correct, that next discussion that we had, we did talk about that with Advance, where they love having it. And I can tell you that we have someone at Public Works who has to chase to see who's at least each location. And Bill's just been fantastic, but it's very hard because they change their contracts, they don't tell us. But this way, we would know exactly who's hauling in, who's hauling out, and then when you have a concern, it is. But for them, if they're already in a market, they want to get the entire market. And that was one thing that Advance stated to us that they would love. Once their truck is in here for the week, picking up a few more loads is not a big issue for them.
So if we included all of these places in our recycling bin and we only had one guy doing it, would it be reasonable to expect our costs to go down on at least a small percentage as opposed to keeping on going up?
It's possible. I can't say that.
No, no, I know you can't speak for them, but I mean, if they're going to get, if they would get the whole city and they want the business, you would expect.
If they turn into the exclusive.
Right, that's what I mean.
Service, that would be a discussion that we would have with them.
I think that's certainly something, if the council is wanting to consider that, to have more discussions with the multifamily vendors, to the point of getting information on what they're paying, who their vendor is, how long they've been providing the service and have some discussions with our current provider, maybe just a sampling, maybe just have them look at two or three complexes and see if what they would provide in terms of a service cost, how it compares with what the complex managements are paying at this time. Just one suggestion.
Okay, I guess the way I leave it from my perspective, I'd like to see us pursue this a little bit. I don't, you know, I don't like to speak for staff's time because I know you guys have your plate full, but if you're willing to pursue it, see if you get all these guys to come to a meeting, which I know would be really difficult, but try and get their opinions. Say, listen, here's an opportunity, we think we can lower your garbage costs. We can't tell you exactly how much, but it will go down somewhat if you start a recycling program. I think most managers, when you tell them there's going to be a reduction in something, it usually gets their intention because they're all trying to make a living and make a profit. So I guess from my perspective, I'd like to see us pursue it. I'm a big believer in recycling, I think it's really good for everybody. So I'd like to see us pursue it, but that's just my opinion. And thanks for listening.
Thank you for the questions. Mr. Baner.
Thank you. I agree with Alderman Cannon about a lot of what he said. I'm such a big believer in recycling, I think it's the right thing to do. I know we don't compel residents to recycle, we give them a sheet and I've got a couple folks on my block who get their recycling container ticketed occasionally because there's pizza boxes and garbage sticking out of it. So, and in those cases, I'm not sure any amount of education is going to work. This is one of those things where I'm not a big fan of, you know, government reaching their hands in other people's business, but I would seriously consider just compelling multifamily residences to offer their residents recycling, also to mitigate that cost, because it is going to be a cost. And if you notice, Fred mentioned, we used to break even with recycling because there was a big aftermarket for recycling. That doesn't happen anymore, it's fairly worthless. So there is much more of a cost than there used to be here. To mitigate that cost, I think the city would be helpful using our powers to get a single vendor to do hauling for the apartment complexes. So my thoughts on this overall are, make it happen. I mean, literally, make people offer recycling to those residents, but help them as much as we can in terms of getting, aggregating contracts together. The next topic we're going to consider is our recycling costs. And I would never say, to save the city residents' money, I want to compel these guys to recycle so we can drive our costs down. That would certainly not be my thinking. It's the reverse, in fact. When we're negotiating, we can tell our recycler, hey, it'd be nice if, when you get into the city limits, there are other accounts we'd like to coordinate, once we pass an ordinance that compels apartment complexes to add recycling containers. The biggest thing for these apartment complexes, if I'm not mistaken, is they don't want to sacrifice parking lot spots. That's a biggie for them. My view, driving past the ones that we're all familiar with, is the garbage dumpsters are always overflowing and they have an occasional mattress in them. So offering and educating about recycling will siphon off, will siphon off material that would go into the garbage dumpster into the recycling one and hopefully it would balance out in terms of just the unsightly factor. But like I said, I would go big on this and I would encourage us to pass an ordinance saying, you have to offer this to your residents, because we offer it to all the other city residents, and I think recycling is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Fred, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, Mayor, just to address one of Alderman Baner's comments in regards to parking concerns, we've already talked a little bit at the staff level about, yeah, what will we need to do in terms of apartment complexes, condo complexes that are tight on parking? If we pursue this and have to take, say, six or eight parking places away and they become non-compliant with the parking requirements, you know, there's other options such as looking for places that aren't taking parking places away if they've got some open space and the like, or just, you know, if they have to take a few away and they're agreeable to it, we would need to just amend their conditions to do that. So just something to consider, but something that can be handled.
Thank you. Mr. Gallo?
Have we started any dialogue or at least reached out to our neighbors or other folks in the nation and what they're doing to address these problems similarly in other complexes across the country or even locally for that matter?
I've only had discussions with two nearby communities that are kind of frustrated like we are. They've made some efforts, I think in one case, a number of years ago, and just got not a whole lot of interest. You know, you come to them and say, hey, if we all banded together, there might be a means to save money, but they just kind of fell on deaf ears.
Yeah, not even so much for financial savings at first, but just solution exploration or talk to some national waste and recycling associations, the trade industry.
We certainly can. We have so far leaned and relied on Dave Van Vorn with SWANK, as Barry mentioned earlier, and they've got great resources. And that'd be the first place I'd start if you or the council wants more information on that, we can look at that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Diastis?
So I made a few notes here. What communities around us are already doing this? How are they doing this? I am absolutely opposed to making somebody do this. And then, my favorite group here, we can't get Brookwood to talk to us about fixing floods and storm sewers and everything else. How are we ever going to get them to talk about this subject? I think we're trying to bite off more than we can chew. Continue educating them and let them do their own thing, unless you've got some better answers. I can't see us, and I'm not going to force people to do this. It's a great idea, but we're, like you said, government's putting their, our hands in somebody else's pockets and forcing them to do unfunded mandates. I'm opposed to that.
Thank you, Mr. Diastis. Other questions, discussion? Mr. Baner?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Diastis about forcing a mandate. However, it would be nice to find out what the benefits would be and offer them an incentive. So I'm not about, against offering people a financial incentive if they choose to take it, that's wonderful. If they don't, that's their choice, so, but I agree that we should not force a mandate on them and tell them what they have to do, so.
Thank you for the discussion, Mr. Baner.
Just to clarify, if you're calling that forcing upon them, then having residents park a recycling container next to their house is a mandate, it's just that residents don't have to fill it if they don't want to. My suggestion is, make the same type of setup for multifamily housing. They have to have a container and their residents in those apartment complexes can use them if they want to, but they have to have a container. So again, it's not a mandate unless you're calling what we do for the 6,500 households in the city a mandate by making them, putting a line item on their bill to pay for recycling and to have a container in their garage or next to their house.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baner, for the discussion. So you brought this forth for discussion, you would like some direction, but from what I'm hearing.
Additional.
At this point, if there's interest on the part of, enough of the council members to continue looking at this, we'll be glad to look at this, taking into account the comments that have been provided tonight and do some additional investigation, do some additional research into how some others have done it successfully and come back at some point.
And I think that's, again, we got enough information that we can go back to SWANK regarding the questions about who's doing it, how are they doing it, if there's any other additional. But I think what we're saying is, if you give us enough direction about the education, we would actually come back regarding a staff report with some of these other answers.
Okay. So straw vote for asking for more information in a staff report of how to move forward. I'll bear. I'd say have your mandate.
Thank you. Thank you.
Six.
It was five.
It was five.
Five.
Six.
Thank you.
Do we have a straw vote yet?
Five.
Five, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Greenbaum, so. Thank you. Mr. Fred, you're up for the?
Next part.
The next part, the recycling contract.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Our existing five-and-a-half-year contract with Advanced Disposal that we entered into in December 2012 is scheduled to expire the end of June of this year. Staff has had several discussions with Advanced in the last few months in regards to their level of interest if we were to pose of them a one- or two-year contract extension, in part because of the previous item that we just discussed. And we did add some of those discussions on the multifamily recycling to them. That could be advantageous if we want to seriously pursue some of the multifamily options at some point in the near future, say in the next year or two. The current price for single-family recycling in the final year of the contract is $3.91 per single-family home per month, based on initial discussions with Advanced. And again, a lot of it is market-driven, there will be some increase if we have a contract extension. We don't know what it is yet, we've kind of been in and around the dollar per home per month, but these have just been preliminary discussions. We certainly would want to wrap this up in the next 30 to 60 days in terms of getting this completed if we are going to do an extension before the June expiry. One thing to point out, we started about a year and a half ago what we call a waste swap with Advanced Disposal so that the city is allowed to tippet refuse materials at our Burdenick Street Station and in return, Advanced was to divert some of their materials or at least equivalent amount to the SWANK facility. They report to us that while they're happy to continue doing it, they have found that there is a cost to them to do that, so our negotiations with them certainly would continue with, they're proposing that. That doesn't mean that we have to commit to that, but they've brought that up. They also have brought up that the rebate incentive program, they would prefer to go away, again, market-driven at this point. So those are the issues that we have in talking with Advanced. I think the advantage, if we are able to successfully negotiate a contract extension of a year or two years, is to roll into it some of the multifamily matters, which could, could, you know, get the price down in that regard, but we would want more information from Advanced and certainly at least the direction that the council's given us tonight. We can have more specific discussions, knowing that there is at least some interest in pursuing that. The other option is to simply move forward soon with putting bids out, advertising for that with the intent of changing, either retaining the vendor at a bid price or considering a different vendor based on how the bids come in. We would, if that's the direction of the council, we would likely just use the 2012 bid proposals, dust those off, update them and move forward with that in the next 30 to 60 days. We have good service from our vendor. I just will point out that we've learned two things. One, don't change vendors in the winter. We did. It was difficult. Secondly, there is a value, as we found out by having a good vendor that provides a reliable service. And, you know, when we changed vendors in 2012, it was for the sake of saving a couple of cents. Ultimately, it worked out well compared to the previous vendor, but there certainly were a lot of growing pains when we changed vendors. That's all I have.
Thank you. Questions for clarification? Mr., yes?
So Fred, maybe you can make me understand a little bit. So what you're saying is our cost of recycling, if we stay where we're at, is going to go up a dollar a house per month?
We're seeing that's the initial indication based on proposals that they've given us and what they've come to the table with.
In conjunction with that, they want to raise the fee because of the garbage swap thing?
Correct.
And how much do you perceive that going to be on a yearly basis per house? And how much do you perceive that going to be on a yearly basis per house or a monthly basis, one or the other? I know you had some numbers in here, but I'm not sure where you were headed with that.
Indicated in the report, based on the numbers that we've been talking, probably 30 to 50 cents per home per month.
Per month? Okay. So, in light of the fact we have some of the highest garbage costs in our area, I would suggest we relook at all the way we have employees paid through the garbage fund and have that refigured for actual time they spend in here. I mean, we've made some dramatic changes in the way we handle garbage in the city. And to my knowledge, I don't recall seeing anything in our budgets that shows any reduction in our cost for all those good things we accomplished last year by getting, or a year and a half ago, to have Advanced take all that stuff in. And I, I, for one, will not support any increase in our garbage cost to our residents when we have the highest garbage cost around by far. So, I appreciate you handling the information to us. I think Advanced must feel like they have us by the throat because I think that it seems like when we went with them, they weren't that much cheaper than anybody else. So, maybe it's time we take a look and just see what other people are offering. And maybe I'll have to eat my words later, but it just seems like we weren't that far. I mean, if I remember, the second person in line was only like 25 cents.
I believe it was even five or 10 cents.
Oh, okay. So, it's pretty close.
It was pennies, I believe.
And I know the business has changed, so I'm not naive to think, I know the recycling business has really gotten tough, but I guess I'd like to see us pursue some of those ideas before we ask the residents for any more money for garbage. Thank you.
For recycling?
Because they're all tied together. It's the same fund.
Right. But what we're discussing is recycling at the moment.
Well, you brought garbage in too.
I understand.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Diestes.
Thank you. A dollar a month, 50 cents a month, 38% increase. I'm sorry, take out your dust bunny and start dusting off that proposal. You need to, you need to, this is absolutely ridiculous. You have to put this out the proposal. And I would put out the prices that you're, that we're getting right now, not that anybody couldn't get those, and say, we're looking at, we want prices that are at or below. I get bids every day from customers who say, I want, I want a price that's at or below what I'm getting. We can ask. We may get, we may not get, but 38%? No way. I would never support that.
Mr. Banjo.
I guess just to note, while we're reviewing numbers, Fred also made mention in here that we're, we're most likely going to lose the several tens of thousands of dollars in rebates. So, if you're adding costs, add that into... Now, I, I will have to say, I'm sure everybody is doing that. Like, like I said before, recyclables are fairly worthless right now. So, so we're going to be starting from a negative standpoint from, from the rebates program. I'm sure, I'm sure they're all like that. But I see no problem with, if, if it's not going to be too much trouble with staff sending this out for, for...
RFP.
Bids, just so we know, because we might be shocked that they've all risen. I'm, I'm not sure, but we won't know unless we have staff look for, for some new contractors. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Fred or Mr. Comstock, because you, it states here that it's June 30th, 2018 expires?
Right. And as we said in the write-up, and again, it will take about 90 days, but we are ready. City Attorney Jim McCall is going to laugh at this, but we can take it off the shelf, dust it off, and put it back out there. So, but again, it goes back into, you know, if that's the direction that we'll do. But I guess that the other thing is when we put it out there, I guess, what we will put it in, and that will be a further discussion if the straw vote is to put this out to bid is, do you want us to look at two, four, or five years like what we've done in the past, just so we have some parameters when we put that out there? Because the last one was obviously for 5.5 years.
And a question that I would have too, I guess, in consideration of Barry's question with regards to the multifamily matters is, we could certainly go back to Advanced shortly and say, make us your final offer, but it needs to be, you know, net neutral or no increase because that's the direction we've got, take it or leave it. If council's comfortable with Advanced's service at current rates, we could make one last attempt before we go out to bids, or we could run them simultaneously, get the bid materials ready, and continue the discussion with them.
Okay. Yes. Other further discussion? So, the two questions are, one, we can ask for, to go back to Advanced and say, it's got to be neutral. If it's not neutral, then we want, council is directing you that you're going out to bid.
That's what I'm understanding from the discussion.
Yep.
So, first question is, if we want to go back to Advanced and say...
You can do both at the same time.
Yes, we can do it at the same time. In other words...
Ask them and then...
In other words, we would ask them if, if you can't keep, like you suggested, what's your best shot? What's your best offer? It doesn't come back with what council has directed, at the same time, we go out to bid. So, yes, Mr. Diestes?
I have a question legally, if we can do that. I don't think there's a problem with it. I think, as I understand the discussion, the question is to go to Advanced, and in the meantime, prepare the documents necessary to get other proposals so that if that is not successful, those proposals or requests for proposals can go out.
Only after we complete discussions and negotiations with Advanced, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So, in other words, if it takes a week to have the discussion with Advanced, and at the end of the week it doesn't work, hello, U.S. Post Office, here's our, here's our proposals. Mr. Diestes?
So, I'm, if it's legal, I'm fine with that, but I think you bring up a good point, Mayor. There needs to be a time limit put on them so they don't drag this out for a month or two and all of a sudden our contract is over. And now, they just say, well, you're on a month-to-month, and we're going to jack it up 50% now. I'm fine with, you want to try and negotiate a deal with them that stays net neutral on everything, or we go out to bid. I'm fine with that, but you've got to put a time limit on, say, you've got a week to make a decision because we're preparing our RFP.
Understood. Understood. I agree.
Barry or Fred, how, how quickly could you get to Advanced and say, get an answer from them?
I'd say with the holidays coming up, I'd not want to give it more than two weeks. You know, try to have a discussion with them this week, next week, or at the latest, the first week of April. And I believe that still gives us time to, if we get proposal materials prepared simultaneously with that, we could certainly have the bid documents advertised probably by mid-April.
So, two weeks from today?
Two weeks from today.
They have to come back, otherwise...
Otherwise, the proposals are going out.
Correct. So, that's what staff has, and that's what we have proposed, kind of a straw vote to do exactly that. Two weeks from today, it's either net neutral or else we go out to bid. All paper? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Comstock? We now go to emails.
It's going to be a tag team on this one too, but obviously from time to time, we hear from Alderman, hey, I didn't receive a email. I was told that I got an email, and we figured it's about time, even though we've discussed this with Alderman, when they ask us to actually put it out there. So, the first step, obviously, with any email, even if it's coming through the web, is that our email firewall, actually, the application takes that email. And obviously, like most firewalls, it has, and it's looking through its filter for what kind of information is actually coming in there. And I can tell you that it is a very aggressive filter. Not, everything gets through it, but at the same point in time, that's why, like most municipalities and government agencies, people are always trying to hack into us. But if it makes it through, and we get regular updates from, because it's a major company that we use for our firewall, but the inappropriate sources are typically stopped at that point. And obviously, there's reasons why they're stopped. Some are quarantined because it's questionable for one thing, and sometimes it's just non-existent at all. Sometimes we do have people, when they're on the web, they might actually have, they don't go through the full process and they hit all the way through and don't send it through us to at all. However, if something does get through the filter, the first place that it's going to go to is the deputy city clerk, sitting on the left-hand side of the mayor. And obviously, one thing is now it has a human process that is actually looking at what came through the filter. And I will tell you, even with the filter, there is sometimes inappropriate information that is being sent. We actually have one ward, it seems, every so often we do get stuff that is completely inappropriate. But again, it's made it through the filter, it's uncalled for, and it does not get forward. But all information, all emails that are appropriate, make it to the deputy city clerk, get funneled to the city council. That's the full city council. So, when someone says, hey, I didn't receive it, it either got stopped by the filter or we never got it through any other appropriate. But nothing ever stops at the deputy city clerk. Now, when an email does come in, let's say that's sent late on Friday, you might not see it until Monday or Tuesday, depending on when emails are checked, but it is going through the entire process. Why is this discussion also very important? Because obviously, we're trying to protect the city, but we are also, per open meetings and per record retention, all those emails are documents that we need to keep. And again, very briefly, for people at home, emails are local records. We are following the Local Records Act, and there's obviously certain things that we have to keep, why you have to keep it, communication, discussion, pertinent information, how it's managed by the source, or what is actually being discussed. So, there's legally why we have to have it. So, if you're having a discussion, that's why we've said in the past, if you're responding something, please put the deputy city clerk on it so that record continues. And we understand sometimes people might not remember to do it, but you should follow up the next day responding to that email so those can be retained. The other thing that we want to stress, and I know that when City Attorney Jim McCall was actually doing his basic training for elected officials, please remember that personal emails, especially if you're doing it during a correspondence, at a business meeting like this or anything else, are foible. And if you say, oh, I didn't do it, and it comes back later, oh, you did do it, remember, the city doesn't have a record on it. You're on the issue with the state's attorney, and that is a violation. So, again, we do remind you that private emails, and if you watch the courts for the last few months, last few years, doesn't matter what level of government, and private emails are being scrutinized for open communication. And we felt that it was important to mention what goes on here in the city of Raleigh Meadows. But if you had any more discussions to understand how our filter works, how Ginny actually forwards emails, but also, we do have one human who actually receives that and does look for what is, doesn't change any part of the email, doesn't filter it past, it's just making sure that what is being sent, if it made it through their filter, is appropriate. Not shocking. But, but that is the really brief discussion of, unless Ginny wants to add more, that is my update, just how emails and protocols and the filters actually work here in the city of Raleigh Meadows. And then, obviously, what we mentioned, just the caveat and the caution about what emails are and what our business and what could be foible and what the courts are really looking at right now.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. One question brought up, you mentioned parameters. Who sets the parameters for the filter?
So, typically, the firewall...
Just a follow-up with, in other words, if we have a business that has a name that may not get through the filter or a company or somebody inquiring?
Typically, a lot of those protocols are set up by the firewall companies. And then, you can actually ask, and obviously, our IT department can also utilize and say, this email address is correct. This, anything coming from this area is a known professional email that we can take any information. So, your first idea is, here's the stringency of the firewall company, and then we might change a few of those pieces just to make it more open. And we do have that. There are certain things that people, firewall does look for different addresses, and it might be a known address that has been used or hacked in the past, but maybe it has a small change in it. That small change might be enough for us to open it back up. So, when I talked about quarantine, that's sometimes what happens with certain quarantines. Even with our filters, when people try to send emails that are extremely large, our parameter is that we do not accept emails to a certain size because that has been known to sometimes have worms or viruses or something else. So, we have some rule that we allow certain things up to a certain point. So, again, you have that filter company, also known as the email, and then we will open up when we do know an address is okay, or a business.
Thank you. Questions for clarification?
I guess I have a question about, after it makes it through the firewall, then it goes to human eyes, which are not the intended recipient's eyes, for the intended recipient's protection, I guess, for lack of a better term, if it's inappropriate or, or some other reason in content? Is that true? The reason it goes to Ginny is to protect the Alderman, the elected officials, from saying something that may be inappropriate?
Just the source information. So, let's say, the caveat that I've been talking about is sometimes people send an email that says, per your request, and Ginny opens up the attachment, and after her eyes water and everything else, she has to close it down. So, we do get every so often some pornography that does get through the filter, but that's it. But if someone's sending you an email that says, hey, Alderman Gallo, blah, 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 that's going right to you. So, nothing's being filtered if that's your thing. But all that the human is looking for, Ginny, is just making sure that nothing got past any of those other things, but nothing that someone's saying to you and nothing that someone's alluding to or something else is being changed or told.
Okay. Because I, you know, I've, I've been here newly elected for less than a year now, coming up on a year. And I, I can count five instances where I, I have been told by my residents that, that they have sent me emails and I haven't received them. And then I've had them forward to what I have is a dedicated email address, all city business, so I get a direct email. And that's foible because if anybody wanted to FOIA a subject out of those emails, they can have at it. You guys can have the account after my four-year tenure is up. However, when they forward it to me, I mean, I'm not a firewall filter, so I, I couldn't see what the firewall may have perceived as a, as a threat. But nothing on there seems to be a threat. And I can understand one time or two times that a firewall has, has detected something, and then maybe after that, it got clogged or it never made it to Ginny to then forward thereafter. But other times, I do receive emails, again, the sender is guilty of sending it at maybe 3:00, 4:00 in the afternoon on a Thursday or Friday, and then I'll receive it by Monday morning or Tuesday morning. And followed up by Sunday, I'm already getting a phone call from a crabby resident saying that I haven't responded to their message, and I explain to them that it's intercepted before it comes to me. And should I see it, I will go ahead and respond back. And then, I say, if you want to send it to me immediately, feel free to send it to this email address, and I'll respond appropriately. But there's been times when it hasn't come through, and I don't know what the explanation is for that. And I'm not accusing you, Ginny, in any way of not forwarding them, but I don't know where they go.
Those emails, because I've gotten, they actually talk to me and say that they've sent an email. They have, it has never made it here. We check our filter, and they can check that person's email address. It never made it. It didn't even make it through our filter. It never even got here. So, I know those people that you're talking about.
Well, I mean, just on February 22nd, I received another one, which was addressed to all of us on the council. And we, we all were supposed to receive it, and none of us received it.
That one didn't come in.
And then it was forwarded to me, and that's why...
And I asked him to send it to me personally, and then I forwarded it out to you guys. So, never, it never... So it never, it never even got here. Didn't even get blocked by a filter.
It's difficult for me to understand that. Like, in 1997, I would understand that we don't, people don't know how to email, or there's a problem with, you know, the chain. Now, it's difficult for me to continue to comprehend that after so many times. So I don't know if we need to adjust our firewall settings, or another solution to not occupy your time with screening our emails, because we don't get that many emails?
There are also the emails that come to the wards. The emails that are addressed to your email, your private email address, like gallo@cityrm.org. I never see those.
Correct.
Those go directly to you. The ones that come to the wards have blown up people's emails before I was looking at them. It's so much, you wouldn't believe the amount of garbage that comes in here.
Which is no different than the typical day at work.
And that's why we started doing that, because some people's email accounts shut down, because those were also being forwarded to your regular email address. So you had tons of garbage in there. And we don't want, oh, sorry, we don't want that to happen. We don't want your email account shut down, because it's so full, it won't take any-
I think a solution for that, I mean, we can worry about ourselves in that regard, but I think a solution for that is, after it makes it through the firewall, if you still want to have a physical set of eyes screen whatever emails we receive as councilmen and women, that's fine, you can set up an auto forward, but we should receive, if you're going to put an address on a public page, the city's page, that says, this is going to go to Alderman Joe Gallo of the Fourth Ward, that will go directly to Alderman Joe Gallo of the Fourth Ward, regardless if it goes in tangent simultaneously to Ginny Deputy Clerk, but it's misleading to the residents that think that it is going to me when it doesn't go to me without going somewhere first. And then it's just not, I don't think it's full transparency.
It'll always go somewhere first, because it will go through the filter.
Firewall is, yeah, it's not someone, that's a firewall.
And then it would come to me.
Right. And as a, you know, my wife's a teacher in a school district, and the district owns the emails, much like the city does here, but they come directly here.
Okay. But just so we focus it on, the city is, what other-
I think the city's wasting its time screening emails.
Okay.
There's better mechanisms to not have to have redundant human beings misleading residents.
Or having a discussion with IT about, is it IT that set up the firewall? I guess my question is-
Yeah, they can adjust it.
The same thing that we feel, and again, that's why we're having that discussion. We feel the parameters have been set up, they do work, we do make sure what is being, but again, even when certain people, and I know which email you're now talking about, because we've had that discussion, you know-
Mr. Gallo, Mr. Gallo, please, go ahead.
But the same thing is, again, did it ever get to us? No, the filter's saying that it never got to us. Now, I can tell you, sometimes people feel that they sent it, and it didn't go, and I can also tell you that it also goes on the other side. Most recently, I know that City Attorney Jim McCall was trying to send me an email, and it took four times for him to even get it to me. So is it on his side? Is it on the provider of that email, potentially? And again, cyberspace is cyberspace, but protecting the city and making sure what is getting through still needs those eyes.
Thank you for the discussion. Mr. Bud Metzger.
I've worked construction, I'm not really afraid of opening up the wrong email and seeing a four-letter word. It's going to be okay for me. So if more stuff comes through, I'd rather have it that way than to miss an email from a resident who really wants to get it to me.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Mr. Diastis.
If I'm not mistaken, there are also phone numbers. So if somebody can't send you an email, or doesn't get, they can always pick up a phone and just call you. It's my opinion.
Sometimes a paper trail is preferable.
Mr. Gallo.
Sometimes a paper trail is preferable.
Okay. Mr., any comments you'd like to add to this, since you're the one who gives the training to all of us?
No, I would just like to just say, I don't think there's anything misleading about the way the system currently operates. I wouldn't classify it as misleading, so, other than that, I don't have anything to say.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Crumstock, let's move on to Cardinal Drive.
Sure thing. Obviously, this is in for discussion before the city council for two things. Obviously, it's in for informational, and it's also to have a discussion that potentially the city council will allow for an ordinance to come. Obviously, we had a very nice February 24th Community Prayer Breakfast that was held at the Community Church of Rolling Meadows. Right after the event, Alderman Gallo and I were approached by Elder Wes Cunningham from Cardinal Drive Church of Christ, and after talking to him briefly, I asked him to send a letter pertaining to the issue at hand. He did do that, and that's why we have a committee of the whole discussion in front of you. So obviously, after I received the letter, I've driven by that location 10 times, and I did witness some residents and some cars in that parking lot utilizing, obviously, the park. What I have before you is actually a request for the city council to consider waiving, and we would need an ordinance on this, because obviously, the rules that we have in place, I can't just do. But it's going to waive the permit fees, construction fees, and services for this parking lot project for the Cardinal Drive Church of Christ. I think that if we were having a request from Community Church, I would be having a completely different discussion with you, obviously waiving permits, but we utilize, meaning the city of Rolling Meadows utilizes the Community Church parking lot. We have special events, we have block parties, we have other things that we're already utilizing that parking lot. With Cardinal Drive Church of Christ, I can't find a direct correlation to help them out with making a recommendation to the city council to allocate some money for them to do that. In my heart, I would love to find it, but without a direct correlation, I just cannot. But what I'm in front of you asking is, please consider the request that I have before you. And then my second part is, I hope that the council will allow for a future discussion at a committee of the hall, dealing with houses of worship and building permits. For parking lots, I really see that's a very nominal part. If you're doing major construction, or even minor construction, at a house of worship, yes, I understand that there are more inspections and all the other pieces. But I think for parking lots, there's a positive that most people see, and I think that's another one. The final comment that I say before we actually have the open discussion is that I did give a copy of this letter to the Park District Executive Director. You know, I don't speak for the Park District, they're a completely different taxing body. I hope that they would see that allocating some money is in their benefit too, just like how they utilize this. But at the same point in time, I feel it's a discussion that we should have. I haven't run any numbers, because I don't know if they're doing the full parking lot or the half parking lot, as they've mentioned, but I do believe that this is a benefit, and just like I would did with the library, and just like I would do if someone else came up, the direct benefit is not there, but I do think that it does have a benefit to the community, and that's why I'm coming to all of you for those two questions. Would you allow an ordinance come? And then the second thing for future cow, that we talk about houses of worship and the permits. And with that, I know that Alderman Gallo heard the same conversation before I got the letter.
Well, I think we've had a conversation, because Clearbrook has also come forward on several occasions, and they've been here for 50 years. So if we're going to go forward with a future discussion, I would like to see that we do the same thing for Clearbrook, because they've had several parking lot construction, and when I brought it forth, we had nothing as an ordinance that we could help them at this time. So questions as we go forward? Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Barry, could you just give me a ballpark idea of what kind of money we're talking about? Just a high and a low. Is it $2,000, $10,000, is it 500, 600?
I think that that's a good parameter, depending on what they actually do. It could be between the $2,000 and $10,000, because if they do the full 100-plus thousand-dollar project, it's not really per se our permit fees, it's going to be the construction engineer.
I understand.
But we would be doing that. But I think that 2 to 10 is a good number. But it goes back into what project area they're going to be doing.
So my reaction when I read this the other day is, I was kind of confused as to why we even got this, because it's not our property, for one. The Park District is a direct beneficiary of them being able to use the parking lot to access the park. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I read that they, there's a big, there's a little hunk of that park that's actually in their parking lot?
In the letter from the Cardinal Drive Church of Christ, they do say 5% roughly is in there. And to answer your question, I felt that there was enough of a benefit for the community to bring this before the city council for the permit.
Well, I guess my own personal suggestion would be, I think we should turn this over to the Park District and let make them a decision, because it's their property, in essence. I'm not, again, being, trying to be mean to them, but I mean, I, for one, don't want to set a precedent that we're going to start giving everybody a free parking lot if they decide to redo it. I just don't know if that's the way we want to go with nonprofits, because if it's a church, okay, so how about a nonprofit who's not a church? Do we help them also? I just think you open up a Pandora's box. I'm not against any church, I'm a church-going person myself. I just think this is an area I don't want to go down. So I would not be for putting this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diastis.
I thought at one point in time, we had this conversation about permits and houses of worship, and I thought, we said we would waive fees that are not direct fees that we pay. Then we, wasn't, I mean, so if it cost the city something, then we pass that cost along. If it did not cost us, then we waived it. So as the term was, net neutral, so if it cost us 2 to 10,000, if it cost us, if it cost the city 5, and we would have charged 10, we charged the 5 and waived the other 5. I thought we had already established that a long time ago.
We had discussion about it, but it was, at that point in time, it was each one had to come back. So yes, you are correct, we did have some of that discussion in the past, but each one has to come back, because the ordinance doesn't give, it was for that specific point in time. So each ordinance that we've actually done was for each item, so-
So the guys in the back are shaking their heads, yes, to you and to me. So I don't understand what the shake, pull, yes means.
Good friend. Chris Fred would have experience over the years, or just get your comment.
Yes, I know, I know, you're pointing to your brain, the most powerful computer in the room right now, yes.
Maybe I shouldn't draw attention to me, not in my head, but what Barry is indicating is my recollection over the years of what the city council did in terms of wanting to see each requester each time and taking action on that, rather than approving something that was across the board for each not-for-profit. That goes back probably at least 10 years to my recollection, so, city manager's correct, I believe.
So in this case, what would we be doing? Would we be, we say, yes, bring it to us, and then we could determine what our out-of-pocket's going to be, and then pass an ordinance based on that?
What I'm asking for is the ordinance that would waive the fees.
Entirely.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then I have to go say, that's establishing a precedent in my eyes, and I'm good for doing what we've done. I also think that Mr. Cannon brings up a point, the Park District needs to get involved, that people are using it with the purpose of going to the park, then I think the Park District needs to be put, to be brought involved. But I'm fine doing what we have always done, as opposed to setting a new precedent.
So just clarification, is as long as the city goes forward, it's net neutral for us, you're good with that?
I'm fine doing what we've always done in the past.
Yeah, what Alderman Diastis is stating, so the city amount would be, but outside contractors would actually be passed right through.
Yes, that's what we've done in the past.
Okay. Further discussion? Mr. Banjo.
I agree with the two gentlemen who have spoken already, and I wouldn't be in favor of establishing an ordinance that covers these going forward, just because of the doctrine of fairness would say it applies to them and then other nonprofits. And then I know a couple of house churches in town, too, so those are personal driveways, but they're getting beaten up. So I just think, I think as Alderman Cannon said, we'd be opening up a can of worms here. So I wouldn't agree for an actual law on the books for this. If we want to evaluate these one by one, which I think is quite inefficient, but if we've done it in the past, we can continue doing it. In-house costs, we can waive, but anytime we're writing a check to somebody outside the city, we should be covering those costs at least. Thanks.
Further discussion? So the direction we have, Mr. Crumstock, is we'll ask staff, and we're going to do this on a case-by-case, from what I've heard tonight, so tonight, for this, we're bringing this forward for this specific case, for the Cardinal Drive Church of Christ, so, correct?
Yeah, so again, we're still, each one will be coming, but what I heard, and I guess I wouldn't need a straw vote, because I've heard too, but it would just to continue the past practice of city cost waves, so in-cost, but outside consultant slash additional would be passed straight through to the petitioner.
So straw vote to go forward. Sorry, Mr. Cannon.
So would it be reasonable to find out what this is actually going to cost us before we vote on it? I mean, because we-
Without them submitting a permit, again, are they doing the 54, are they doing 110? It's kind of hard, we can give an idea, and I think we can ask Burke for that.
We can put an estimate together within a few days or several days, and report back on what the estimate is, or at the time of the ordinance for a stream-
Would it be reasonable for us to suggest maybe we postpone this until we get an answer back from the Park District, because it's basically their property?
It's a combination of-
It's not city property, it's Park District property.
Right.
I guess if you're asking me, my recommendation is, obviously, this ordinance is not next week, on March 27th. The earliest that it would even be shown is in April, so hopefully by that time, before we put the ordinance, we would know if the Park District is going to discuss this, if they're going to do this. And again, referring back to the letter, they're looking at doing this, you know, spring, summer before their, so I think-
May 18th is when they had it.
Right. So we're still within that thing, and they might actually have a permit ready, but at least if we told them, hey, your overall permit fees might not be as high, I think that goes a long way, too.
Okay, so would we offer the same thing with church, who was brand-new to town? Said they wanted to build a brand-new building. Would we pay for their parking lot, too, or part of it?
I'm not paying for the-
Well, we'd pay for permits for the parking lot, for a brand-new building.
I'd be bringing it back, but I would not see the direct for the city of Rolling Meadows for a new thing. Like I said, if Community Church came to us and said, we're doing our parking lot, I would have a committee of the whole with the city council, because again, we are using their parking lot for markets, the additional festivals-
Well, that's a different situation, I understand.
But I'm just saying, that's what I would be bringing back. But at this point in time, when I was approached, and what I'm seeing, I do see it indirect, that's why I'm bringing back the permit.
Okay, because I guess the other thing I would point out again, is, you know, we have people like, you know, that do wonderful things for society, like Clearbrook, like Little City, you know, we might have a nonprofit hospital come here and do, you know, building. I'm just concerned about how far people are doing good, how much are we going to help out, and maybe hurt ourselves a little bit financially, because we still have to do the work. So it's just a question I bring up, it's rhetorical, but there's an awful lot of nonprofits out there that do a lot of nice things, and I just wonder where we say, okay. That's as far as we go.
And I think, I think that you've known me enough times, I don't bring everything to you. This one, I felt comfortable after talking to them and actually doing the drive-bys to bring this back. And again, we don't have an ordinance, that's why we have to bring each one back. The comfort level was there to actually make this request to the council.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
So further discussion, Mr. Bud Metzger?
Actually, just a question. I'm assuming that a general contractor, a paving contractor actually applies for this permit, and that the church is not doing this work themselves?
That is correct.
So then how does this work? Do we rebate to that paving contractor? Do we rebate to the church directly? Because I'm assuming the paving contractor just marks this up being America.
So what would actually happen is, if we pass the ordinance, when that contractor would be coming into community development, when they're filling out the permit, they would see where the reductions were. So what is actually the outside consultant and which one is actually the city. So they would see the zero-out and say, "This is per ordinance," whatever, and what they're actually going to have to pay for the pass-through for the engineer. So then we can also notify at that point in time the church to let them know. So if they were receiving a quote from that contractor that said, "Okay, permit fee is going to be this," we can actually tell them, "Okay, the permit fee was actually that." But it's the contractor that actually pays for the permit.
The not-for-profit has to be part of that permit process in those cases, absolutely.
Correct. Further discussion? So we're back to looking for a straw vote to move forward. It's going to be on case-by-case, so this is the case tonight.
This is the case, and also going back into the comfort level is in-city cost waived, outside pass-through.
Okay. Can we have a straw vote on favor? One, two?
Can you?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just, we're waiving the outside fees or just the city fees?
Inside, only the City of Rolling Meadows. So our inspectors are review, but when we send this out to another engineer to look at the drainage and how it's actually done, that is a pass-through, because that's an outside consultant.
But your, your staff is recommending this to us, is that correct?
I'm recommending this to you.
Okay.
Further discussion before we try for a straw vote again? Okay, straw vote to move forward with Mr. Crumstock's request, tall in favor?
It's a request as modified.
Request, okay, here five, five, four, one against.
You never even asked for a vote, one way. You used to ask for a vote, and you asked you didn't even vote. Asked her a no's.
No's. All, all against? Thank you, Mr. Cannon.
I just appreciate you counting my votes, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think that we heard that no one's interested in the committee all on this, so, so that question is not there.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn? A second on favor?
Yep.
Aye.